All right, we'll get started this evening. Thank you all for being here this evening with us. If you do have a cellphone, we just ask that you put it on silent. Mr. Teasley, will you join us up front, please? And if everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer this evening.
Let us bow. All wise and powerful God, we come this afternoon first just thanking you, Father God, for allowing us to see a brand-new day, Father God. We thank you for the sun, we thank you for the humidity, the temperature. We just thank you for everything you do for us, Lord. Lord, we ask you right now that you bless these commissioners, that you give them wisdom and give them understanding, Father God, that they'll be able to do their job tonight, Lord. We ask that you bless the commissioners and the people that's here to see what the commissioners doing, Father God. We just ask that you be with them, Lord. And let your Holy Spirit just come and abide in this room with us this afternoon, Father God. Let them make good decisions, oh, Father God. And we just pray that whatever said or whatever done here tonight is pleasing in your sight, Father God. And we'll be very careful that you get the praise, you get the honor, and you get every bit of the glory, for it's in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the littlest. Amen.
Do we have any additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We would like to add an invoice to invoices and quotes over $10,000. This is for Divco in the amount of $11,717.40.
You have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition under invoices and quotes. All those in favor of approving the agenda with the addition, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the agenda's approved. We have several sets of minutes that we need to approve. Have there been any corrections or additions? Thank you. You have a motion to approve the April 14th, April 22nd, and May 2nd meetings' minutes.
Motion to approve the three sets of minutes in the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, minutes are approved. We have one item under old business.
Yes, ma'am. Let me get to it here. Okay, item number one of old business, board to hear update from Randall Turner regarding property located at 21 Hardy Road Martin, parcel 071I, 001A. The extension on this item was granted to May 22nd, 2025, as that extension will take place before our next regularly scheduled meeting. It's time to bring this item back up for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Perry.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of updates, and I'll explain to you guys why. Lead counsel for Mobile Homes Direct is in the state legislature. And pursuant to statute, he enacted his request for legislative stay pursuant to OCGA 910-150. That gives, that stays the case from the week prior to session starting until three weeks after session ends. So that started on January 18th, and it ended the end of April. So for the last three months, we've been dead in the water, and it's by statute, there's nothing we can do about it. I've got the opposing counsel's request for stay in the statute that talks about it, if anybody wants to look at it. But really, nothing we could do about it. I wasn't excited when I got it, but the law is the law, and we've got to deal with the law. And so that's, that's the update. I wish I had some better news. We're trying to get some depositions rescheduled now that that stay is over. Hopefully, we'll get those done in the next four or six weeks, depending on how opposing counsel's schedule is now that he's actually back in the office, so.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions?
Any questions? Unfortunately, guys, I know lawyers know this, litigation is a slow, agonizing, painful process, and this is just par for the course with it. Body wants to know from you guys, the clients, and not the Turners, but in every case, you know, how long is this going to take? I compare litigation to continental drift at this point. It's that arduous. You know, we do what we can to try to keep things moving, but there's stuff like this you run into, there's just no.
Thank you.
Even after it moves and it ends up on the calendar call, there's no telling where it's going to land on that calendar, and it could be still a very long time before it actually.
Yes, so Stevens County, you know, we have two civil trial calendars, two civil trial weeks per year. Yeah, so once you finally get onto a trial calendar, do the oldest ones first, and until you get to be top five, you're, you may be on the calendar, and you may sit there. It's not just Stevens County. I've got a case out of Gwinnett that's been on the calendar for the, since January. Last time we were number six, we were hopeful we were going to get called, but, you know, two cases left before us. Feel like, great, those two cases got tried, so we'll move up, right? We didn't move up that much because another older case bump got thrown on the calendar ahead of us. So it's just part of it. It's just trying to get this thing moving. We're trying to get some resolution for everybody, because I know the neighbors want some resolution. You guys want a resolution. I can assure you, the Turners want a resolution, but.
I can speak for myself on a civil calendar. I'm number one, and it's a case that's four-plus years old.
I would say they're usually four to seven years.
Yeah.
Civil case that goes to trial. But it could mediate, depending on what discovery shows.
A lot of things could happen, and not every case gets tried, so you don't always wait for a jury to render a verdict before you get a resolution. I mean, that's really more the exception than the norm anymore, but until you get that notice that you're really high up on the trial calendar, everybody's not as motivated to settle, or when you know you're.
Thank you for that update.
Yep. Anything else?
We could potentially see this rock on for even another year or so.
Easily. And, you know, part of that is I'm sure we'll get another request for legislative stay covers the spring of next year, which is, you know, takes one trial calendar out of play. Is there usually February, you know, anywhere from end of January until early March, which is right in the middle of the stay, and then the other one's in the fall. So they'll easily rock on for another year.
I have no further questions.
Any proposed action on this item?
I suppose we need to do another extension.
Yes.
On the law, we have no choice but to.
I suppose we could move it out six months unless there is a settlement reached for something that were to happen.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, that is my motion.
Okay. So review in six months unless there is a settlement whereupon either the Turners or Mr. Perry would report back to us of the settlement.
Yes.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by the board? Not? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. We have one item under new business. Mr. Hamilton?
I'm under one of new business, board to consider motion to approve amendment to professional services agreement with Safe Built Georgia LLC for civil engineering services and authorized chairman to sign. Safe Built does our commercial plan review as well as commercial inspections. The civil engineering services specifically covers the commercial plan review. Adding this amendment just grants us the ability to continue to utilize those services.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the amendment? Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. We have the one item under invoices and quotes.
This is from Divco Diversified Companies LLC. They handle the assessment notices for the tax assessor's office. This is a timely matter, which is why we brought it before your agenda tonight. The amount is $11,717.40.
Thank you.
Motion to pay the bill.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, bills will be paid. Do we have an administrator or a financier report this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, do we have any department reports?
No, ma'am.
Any reports from the commissioners? Okay. I think we have several items from citizens this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Our first item is from James Addison, Keep the Coast of Stevens County Beautiful.
Okay. Mr. Addison, floor is yours.
Trying to make this fast, because, man, y'all doing really good tonight. So I don't want to hinder you. Listen, I just want to say thank you for amnesty today. Jason, Brittany, even had Craig up there with gloves on. He got a little dirty up there on the hillside. That was awesome. And I want to thank Christian, but on behalf of Keep the Coast of Stevens County, I just want to say thank you for what you do, and I appreciate it 100% everything that y'all do for Keep the Coast of Stevens County Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, too.
All right, the next item is from Shannon Shirley at 40 Brandon Berry Drive.
Hello.
Hey. My notebook don't fit. Hand y'all a picture.
Sure. Sam, if you'll just reset his time, so.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, it's perfectly fine.
Okay. I understand the importance of keeping anything tidy, including a property. The way the ordinance is laid out, I no longer get to enjoy a property that I bled, sweat, prayed, and cried on, and paid for. One person from out of town bought a property next to mine who was fully aware of the way it looked from the start, was given the power to determine the speed I have to go to continue my progress on my property. It no longer about, it's no longer about pride and joy I was taking in restoring the property and the adjoining church. It's now based on the new neighbor's pride in making it better on their terms. They now get to dictate what I, what I may like and what I don't. I understand this ordinance as a whole and its necessity, but at what point did we decide our freedom should be trampled on? Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is now under fire because the ordinance's wording has failed and placed opinions over rationality. This ordinance deems any inoperable vehicle junk, parts of any kind, or infractions in this county. It does not matter if it's a classic or, in my case, one intact, non-destroyed Jeep that was tagged and insured, used for trail riding, that was being repaired. Does this mean the county expects everyone to take this vehicle to mechanic? What if I don't have the carport? Was I expected to buy a completely enclosed carport before starting work on it? I began working on this vehicle so that a neighbor 200 yards away didn't see what they deemed an eyesore, citizens shouldn't have to live up to this type of ordinance that clearly dictates what your hobby is and where you choose to enjoy, enjoy it on your property. Throughout this county, you'll find infractions. The timeline and standards of living of one person to achieve complete compliance of this ordinance won't match others. $20,000 a year versus $100,000 a year will get you different results in the compliance every time. Equipment and dumpsters are expensive, and an ordinary person will pay their bills and feed their families first if that $100,000 isn't a part of their income. How would the county feel if I drove to every single property I could access and turned in complaints based on wordings of this ordinance? I don't like chickens in the yard of a residence that's teaching their children about self-sufficiency. I don't like the people that's collecting metal to take scrap in order to pay their way through life. These are where circumstances are irrelevant, but examples would be considered infractions. We may have a few solutions to the ordinances amendment, but I can guarantee you it can be greatly improved and allow this compliant-based system to be fairly governed and enforced.
Thank you.
Great.
Next, we have Tiffany Lathan at 40 Brandon Berry Drive.
I do want to say I'm sorry.
That one's from 2019.
Okay, thank you.
The video shows how much work y'all done, and y'all have done substantial work. Did you get fined more money or something because of the work, it wasn't enough, or what happened?
What do you mean?
Explain to me exactly what's going on here. You, um.
I don't think there has been a fine.
This was in 2019. I saw the video from what you've done now.
So basically, what that's showing is this new neighbor moved in knowing what it used to look like, and when she found out that we could no longer afford the equipment and the dumpsters to continue at the pace we were previously going, that's when she started, and the friendship ended.
So what happened?
She, she used the ordinance, called the marshal over this property.
So what happened?
What do you mean?
Well, that happened after she called the marshal.
She's asking if you were fined.
Oh, no, we have not been fined. We actually went April 24th for what we were, under the assumption, it was a court date, but there was no judge, none of that. It was just the marshal being the judge. We were not given a fine, but we did request a trial by a judge to plead this case more. We did.
That been set?
To what?
Has the date been set?
By 29th. But the whole thing about it, it should have never had to go that far. If someone was showing progress, considering what that mess was, she should have had no standing in getting the marshal to constantly come out. And it's also to the point to where she videos our kids in the yard. We can't do anything. We brought, we owed a debt to someone for helping put on the new roof. So we have a four-wheeling Jeep with them, tagged and insured. It broke last summer, so he brought it over there, and we put it where it was best for us to work on this. Four flat tires, no, like, I think it's on a drive shaft or something, was not in it yet, because we are having to wait for this mechanic to rebuild the parts, and we have the knowledge to put it back together. This was a completely intact, complete Jeep. It's in that picture on the bottom left.
All right.
Nothing was wrong with it, but she said it was an eyesore. So the marshal now had been out there twice, never said a thing about it. And in the beginning, he said if it's tagged and insured, it's fine, but then it come up, oh, no, if it's inoperable, which we cleared that up yesterday. So that's where all of this started stemming from, was a Jeep made her mad. Four entrances to your 400-plus acres, and you're mad because you can see my Jeep when you enter one of your four entrances that doesn't even have to touch you. It did not inconvenience you. It was not nowhere near you. So that's kind of where that goes, but I actually had something already prepared, so.
We're sorry. We diverted you.
It's okay. It's okay. I'll go ahead, and this kind of sums it up a little more, because I know I'm all over the place. So as a resident alongside many others of Stevens County, it's our intent to stop the abuse of the term nuisance stated in Chapter 34. This ordinance outlines what is considered infractions on property in our county or deemed an eyesore, as well as a minimal list of specific infractions. The ordinance as stated by the county marshal and county is complaint-based. This allows selective prosecution, along with malicious intent, favoritism, personal agendas, and opinions to dictate how the ordinance is executed and enforced. If the ordinance, which is lightly mirrored by the state regulation, is so imperative to have, its enforcement and compliance should be applied to everyone. An ordinance of this caliber should be enforced when the marshal sees an infraction, regardless if there's a complaint filed or not. The term eyesore, as stated in the ordinance, is highly subjective and should hold no value in a governmental system. My property that a neighbor decided to go after, once she didn't get her way, began to be subjected to prosecution with clear intent, malicious intent backing it. The fact that we had only acquired the property one year ago and have made substantial progress with our limited income had no standing in our defense. I myself have asked the marshal how we could be in trouble when his own neighbors, his house, surrounding neighborhood that has inoperable RVs, trash, old cars sitting around, he replied with, "Those are my neighbors, and it's not my business." As an enforcer of the ordinance, he should hold himself and the neighborhood to the same standards. That alone shows where it gravitates towards selective prosecution. The county in itself said that this ordinance's enforcement wasn't able to be completely enforced due to the limited marshals and the county's ability to afford more. Their financial hardship is allowed as a circumstance, but mine wasn't. I believe in being a good steward of the environment. I don't condone unsafe hoarding situations and blatant disregard to proper disposal of waste or conditions that cause physical harm. The nuisances deemed infractions in the ordinance allow anyone to complain on trivial things that they have an alternate aesthetic towards. Properties and neighborhoods unseen, as well as properties without neighbors, should be held accountable, and they're not, because if you own a lot of property and I can't see what's on it, I could never complain, never could see it. The ordinance needs amended in a way that doesn't allow standards of living, monetary and social status, or opinion to dictate an American right to own and operate their property. Myself along countless others ask, is it really an issue, or is this just a way to achieve a look that meets another's gain or opinion? When did that opinion become the law? Is this current ordinance being properly and fairly enforced in its entirety? Do people have the tools and information to successfully execute an ordinance of this type? And I ask you all to look around your neighborhoods. Some of those pictures are on your main paths of travel to work, or right across from your house, and nothing happens to them because you know their story. You know that there's a bigger problem going on here than just little trivial things that developers, new neighbors, neighbors that don't like you anymore, they're using it in this way. If I was a hoarder or just threw my trash out in the yard, heck yeah, go after me, by all means. But don't go after me because your aesthetic is not the same as mine, and I don't have the monetary backing to continue your agenda, especially when I don't give my property up to you, or you find out other things that you didn't like that I'm able to do that you're not. And that's what's happened with this particular situation. But there are bigger ones way past mine, bigger stories coming out that would break your heart. People that don't have what we were able to do, they didn't have the means, they didn't have the equipment, and they just got tore down. It was sad to see, but I appreciate y'all's time.
The one thing I do want to address to you is our marshals, they have to go out. So they don't have discretion in their wheelhouse to say, well, I know this individual that's calling, or I know the individual they're calling about, unfortunately. So because it's their job to go out on every complaint, whether, you know.
Absolutely.
They have to go look.
I agree in the investigation, but if you're going to enforce it and investigate it, why wouldn't you hold your own neighborhood and yourself to that standard? Because doesn't that look a little odd to you? And for him to say on April 24th, "Those are my neighbors, and it's not my business," why don't I get that same respect?
Because you have a different neighbor.
I do. See, that's exactly it. So what if you were unfortunate enough to have someone that moves out of Atlanta that decides to go around your community knocking on people's doors, saying, "I want to enforce an HOA." We should really go after them to make this place look good. Our street's not trashy. If you've ever been down Holiness Church Road, so beautiful and quaint. We all get along, we're all wonderful friends, but this particular one, she tried her best to pit people against each other when she didn't get her way. That's beyond this. She's just an example. She's not the only one doing this. It's not held to the same standard for everyone.
I would agree, and part of it is because we don't, we don't have a band of marshals we can send out to.
Correct.
Look at everything, and like you said, some property is not even visible from a road.
Correct. So my solution in an amendment, I think there should be certain strenuous circumstances that meet the true meaning of a nuisance. There has to be more to it. We can't just simply say, and in the ordinance itself, if you've read it, I'm sure you have, that word eyesore comes up, and it specifically caters and says to attract potential residents in business, where I think that's important, to grow a community. Where does that leave the generations that built this community? Farming people. There should be no reason someone on our street was told to take their collective farm implements off their fence because she didn't like it. That's not fair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Dusty Vincent would like to speak.
Okay.
Okay, what about Teresa Vincent?
What was the address?
The address is 1123 Rock Creek Road.
Thank you.
Hello.
Evening, how are you?
I just want to speak about the land use policy, too.
Sure.
Chapter 34 of the coded ordinances specifically identifies the definition of a nuisance. Particular nuisance isn't how such nuisances are handled. This system is only enforced when a complaint is made and allows anyone to deem anything on your property an eyesore. I have this prepared, and it's wrote out, and it's a speech that talks about the land ordinances, but sometimes I think it's better just to talk to you normally and to read a speech. So I don't feel that, I feel like the land ordinance needs to be changed because it pits neighbor against neighbor. It allows hardships to bad feelings. If you have a grudge against somebody, then that neighbor will, you know, come up to you and turn you in because they don't like you, and it's just not right. It's not right to be able to pit a neighbor against a neighbor, simply because they don't like the way your property looks, or they don't like where you've got your rose bush, or any little small thing. It doesn't matter. My opinion of my land is not the same opinion as you of your land, and I think there needs to be an amendment to it. And Tiffany's right. I mean, there's people out there that has 500 acres you can't see in their property, you know, and there's, there's infractions all up and down the highway, and I understand the marshal doesn't have time to do all that, but, you know, why can't neighbors be neighbors? Why do we have to turn each other in, simply because they get upset with you, or they just don't like you? You know, and people are like that. I would like to just see an amendment made so that neighbor cannot do something against another neighbor, friend to friend. Why can't we just talk it out and work it out rather than having to come to this?
I would say that anytime you have any law or code or ordinance, anybody can complain about anything. Anybody can sue you for anything, and you have to defend it. There, you're not going to find a law that says you can't.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
But I would like to look at the ordinance and see if maybe we could tighten it up some.
Yeah.
With the definition.
Which we've had. I mean, that's, that's what we've been doing over the last couple of years. We've made a couple revisions, so we need to go and look at this chapter in particular and see how it applies, and go look at what other counties are doing, get some examples, because like Tiffany mentioned, there's difficulty in choosing words. The words are very important, and everybody reads them in a different way far as intent goes. So we just need to really go and look at how it's worded and make sure. some examples. Because like Tiffany mentioned, there's difficulty in choosing words. The words are very important and everybody reads them in a different way far as intent goes. So we just need to really go and look at how it's worded and make sure we're sending the right message for what we're trying to do with land use.
Yeah, because, you know, some people may have yard art in their yard, you know, and some people may not like it, you know, but, and I've been following y'all. So I know y'all have been working on this land use policy. I do, and I appreciate that. And y'all have made some good changes to it.
Thank you.
Um, but I would just like to see a little change made to this to where it doesn't pit neighbor against neighbor. If you could take time to look at that, I'd appreciate it.
I think maybe the wording and the definitions, eyesore is so, um, ambiguous, you know, yeah.
And my eyesore may be different than yours'.
Yes, yes, certainly. So we, we take your, um, feedback, you know, to heart and we will certainly look at that.
Okay. I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that wants to address the board that didn't turn in their name? Yes, sir. Or, I'm sorry, I think you saw somebody.
No, it's fine. Yeah, go, go ahead.
You can just state your name and your address for, um, our clerk.
Yes, 1343 Jordan Road.
Okay.
I thought we were on the docket for this evening.
This is the, uh, the land use matter?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you have an objection, I don't have an objection.
This is citizens.
Yeah, they're, they're on the agenda, I believe, for the May 27th meeting for land use. But if you're, if this is separate, please feel free.
No, this was the evening they told us to come.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
This was the evening they, uh, gave us to come to speak.
What you got?
Yes. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife to help allow you to give us a ver- variance, uh, for...
Okay, so
Yeah.
We are a little premature and there may have been a miscommunication because typically you come before our Land Planning Commission Board. So I'm sorry. I mean, we're happy to hear you tonight, but it's not going to be voted on tonight.
They, uh, their item was first held by the Planning Commission, um, last week and, and the Planning Commission recommended approval so that they will be on your second meeting of the month.
Okay. So we're happy to hear your feedback, but it's not going to be voted on until the meeting is set for. So you may...
Sorry for the mix-up, but this is...
No, 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 it, it may be on our end. So we're happy to hear from you tonight and take it into consideration for the next meeting or you can come back.
Speak tonight then.
Okay.
Um, my wife, uh, her family had a family business for, uh, some 50 years, uh, Bottlebenders LLC. Due to my wife's elderly, their age, uh, they closed down the business in May of this past year. Um, my wife wanted to continue part of that business and so we purchased a 16-by-40 building, had to move to our property, uh, had an electrician come in and, and start, um, electrical work and had the county inspector then come, uh, to inspect that electrical work. Um, as he came that day, um, he quickly told us our setback was illegal. I have a picture. I didn't, you probably don't have a diagram. I can give that to you to give you an idea of, uh, what we're asking for. All right. But as we moved that building, we, I said, uh, kind of ignorant of, we were just thinking this is a shop. This is a, uh, workshop. According, I guess, to the ordinance, uh, that size, uh, square footage is considered a building and that our setback was incorrect. That's the red 16-by-40, uh, building that you see on the diagram there. Um, but it was out of ignorance that we set it there. But we set it there because the, the blue building you see just a 12-by-24 is Donna's been her hobby shed for over 15 years. It's permanent. It's got power to it. And so we set that red building in place.
I have a question. So if we're looking at this because we don't have our package?
Yes.
Is this the front edge, the road front edge?
The home, no ma'am. We're set off.
Is it between building, front building?
Our home there is to the left and you'll see the red building is about eight, possibly eight foot, uh, forward of the front edge of the house, the front, uh, you know, side of the house. And that's where the ordinance says.
The setback has nothing to do with the road. It's...
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
So it's just not right, it's not sitting right?
It's, it's forward of the house.
Next to your house, really?
So your house is here and the building's...
The building is eight foot forward of the front edge of the house. Yes, you see in the diagram there. And that's where, that's where the...
I'm on the page now. Thank you.
...for no ordinance were, were illegal.
Okay.
So we are asking for a variance to allow us to continue to keep that, uh, that shop, uh, there. We're in place. Like I said, we moved all the equipment is in the, in the shop. The electrical work is done. Uh, all we need is an inspection to, uh, again, uh, say it's okay and then we can have Hart County UMC come in and, and hook the power up to it. Uh, that's all we're asking for is a variance to keep that shop where it's at.
Okay. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Sorry for the mix-up.
No, no worries.
I'm sorry you even have to come in here for that. So...
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
In Swilling Road down Eastern Olive. Just two quick things. I liked what you said about the eyesore part. That's real subjective. Anybody can say eyesore. Man's got a master's jacket on. Love it. Other people may not like it. So it's all relative.
Yes.
You know, how people look at it. The other thing is this. Eight years ago, you guys voted and went down there and paved half of Swilling Road. Wish y'all paved the other half. Save us about three miles of driving.
Swilling Road?
Swilling Road.
Yes, sir.
All right. We will make a note of that.
I brought it up in one of the other council meetings a couple of years ago and it just did nothing happen. But I didn't come up here and talk to you guys.
Okay.
So now I am. I'm shy. Y'all have to forgive me.
You seem like it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyone else that would like to address us this evening?
Sure.
We may not have an answer this morning.
I've run into that so far.
Warning.
Brian Dooley.
Sir.
1079 Skyline Drive. But I have a farm that, uh, on Rolling Hills Farm Road. My question to you is this. Is it a re- right or a privilege to protect your own livestock?
I take it as a right.
Also, the next question is, is it now permissible for anybody to live in a camper as long as they pay your taxes or your permits in the county?
I'm all, but, um, Christian because that's not exactly accurate. So...
Well, it is by my...
Uh, we, we have a camper permit. Um, that's a 60-day camper permit. Uh, the board can grant an extension or variance to that permit, but it is a 60-day permit.
How long is that permit able to be renewed?
It's, it's not. Not, not, not presently.
Okay. Let me ask you a question.
I think you come and ask for an extension though. Like you can get the 60-day permit, then you would come and ask for an extension and we would grant.
How many times is that extension granted?
There's no limit on it. It's really circumstantial. We've had people that were working on, you know, building a house and they were living in a camper. And as long as we saw progress, we were happy to continue extending it because there are certainly circumstances that are outside of the property owner's control, um, such as delivery of a new mobile home that's backordered because of the housing crisis we're in. And we understand all of that. And if we're provided information, um, I think we've got a good board that's going to make a reasonable recommendation or ruling on that.
None of that's in play in this case.
Okay.
Unless it's an eyesore.
Well, the problem is on my farm, I have dogs. And this lady that lives in that camper for over a year and a half, and I call Chuck, come there and just eyeball it. Is, they got that here good. Problem is, they allowed her, her son, to go get a permit. She's still feeding my dogs. Got an issue with a marshal.
She's feeding your dogs?
Yes. I've got pictures of all the trays and all this kind of stuff, you know. So I'm not saying my dogs don't get out of the lot, but what I'm saying is when they do, it's outside of my control. If a tree falls down on the fence, is that my responsibility?
You want us to give you the legal answer?
I know what the legal answer is. If it's on my property, it is. If it comes from across the creek, it's not my prob- my problem, is it?
Whoever's property it falls on, it's their problem.
What I'm getting at is if the dogs get out, that tree falls on my fence and they get out, is it my responsibility for the dogs to stay in?
Yes, sir.
Where was you grown? Uh, where was you raised, ma'am?
I was raised right here in Stevens County.
I'm going to tell you something. If, if, if I act to God...
I suppose you say act to God.
But you, we are required to keep control of our animals, our livestock at all points.
Even if a tree falls on your fence or a gate?
That would be an argument to be made, but they're still under your purview because it's your property. You have to keep them on your property.
Ma'am, you, you're...
But if he didn't know about it and the tree falls, it's in the middle of the night and they get out, uh, and he had a fence up.
It's not going to keep him from his neighbor suing him though, is it?
Well, it don't mean neighbor will win either.
No, but I'm just saying you're still responsible for them.
I don't think we can litigate.
You've got problems.
I think Debbie and Terry are trying to cross-examine each other up here.
Yeah, we can't, we can't litigate today.
I'm sorry, Chuck. What? I said, I think those two are trying to cross-examine each other, uh, at this point.
Well, something's got to be done about this, okay?
So explain to us your situation. I'm still a little confused.
Well, I want to know what you want us, how you, what you want us to do.
Well, I'm supposed to be going to court May the 29th.
And that is that civil court? Magistrate court?
Magistrate.
And so what, so why are you going to magistrate court? What exactly are you going in there for? What do they say?
Uh, there's a lady that lives across, across Jordan Road from my farm that says my dogs are, have been on her property. That they chased her up the road while she was pregnant.
But she's feeding them?
No, this is a different lady.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that the lady did not tell me the meanings of, or what my dogs do. They don't, they will never chase anybody. Now, if a coyote or a wo- I mean, a fox or something like that or another dog comes up, they're going to nullify the threat. That's their, I mean, the Great Pyrenees, that's, that's what they're bred for.
Well, have you corrected the situation?
How can I correct it when the lady's still feeding my dogs?
It, Mr. Dooley, is, this is in court right now, right?
It's going to be. It ain't cut there yet.
I think you can't litigate it here though. This, I mean...
All right. I don't want to litigate it. What I'm going to do is this. Couple of years ago, my dogs were picked up at, uh, Liberty School, one of them. Brought it to the farm. Said this was just my dog. They gave me a citation for $150. I said, well, let's go down on the farm, find out what happened. And I, we didn't concern about that. Your dog was out. Within 15 minutes, there's a tree, probably nine-foot long, come from across the creek, went through my gate. Didn't hurt the fence. It went through the gate on the backside. Three dogs were out. I went to the Liberty School and talked to the assistant principal and asked her if I could watch the video. Y'all have videos, right? Yes, I do. Well, the teachers were down there on their knees petting the dog. Reason the dog was picked up was because SRO called the marshal, said the dog wouldn't leave. How many people know that think a dog will leave if it's somebody sitting there petting it? All they had to do is just tell everybody to go in and the dogs go back to the farm.
Well, I guess I still have to go back to what is it you want us to do or change that would, that maybe this wouldn't have happened to you?
I'm not God, okay? And neither are y'all. I can't do something that's, that I don't know anything about. If a tree falls on my fence, I'm sorry. I'll get everything back up and I'll fix the fence and that's no problem. I've done it. I had nine cows out down in Loretta Addison's yard. Okay?
So you feel like you should have gotten a warning and because it, you really didn't have any clue what had happened, that they were out and you should have been given a warning so you could have fixed the situation?
Yes.
There you go.
Well, now...
Well, I think that's...
That's one thing. But the second one is when somebody says, I mean, it's all over Facebook, every time a white dog gets out, they're Brown's dogs. I don't own all the white dogs of Stevens County. I want to know how the devilish lady's identified them. Has she been to my farm? I've never even met the lady. She don't know me and she don't know my dogs, but I do.
I would suggest getting an attorney to go in there and help you.
Well, I've got an attorney, but they're wanting me to do something else and I don't want to do that.
I have a quick question. This issue with the dog at large, was that a recent issue or a while back? Is this the issue, this is not the issue you're on court?
I can't, I don't have the dates, what they're saying. I'm going to do the open record request, get it, and we, we going forward with it.
So it is kind of a recent issue?
Yeah.
Were you cited or given a warning prior to the citation?
No.
You were never given a warning about your dogs at large?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
But, but the key to it is this. My attorney is not in this area anymore. He's out, out of state. But anyway, they're wanting me to come after everybody that's involved in this. I don't want to do that. Okay? But in the ordinances and what I got to understand is, used to, like the AI, anybody bought property around the AI, it's, it's the people that bought the property's responsibility to know that there's a farm there. Because there's several different things that comes out on it. Odors, noises, all that stuff. I might check it out. Why?
Why?
Check what out?
The part that tells individuals that if you buy property around agricultural intensive, be aware...
It was in a previous revision to the land use ordinance, the statement you're talking about.
I don't think it was in a land ordinance, but I mean, that is true. It is their responsibility.
It was, it was in there. It used to be in there, but it's not anymore because outside of mine it just passed week.
We, uh, we have that notice of adjacency on the rezoning applications. Um, and then I believe there's some state law about coming to, coming to the nuisance.
Yes. I mean, it is their responsibility to look at the surrounding property and know what they're getting into.
Well, this lady, they bought the house less than two years ago.
Okay.
My problem.
Okay.
They come out of somewhere else that they're not, they're not around the farm.
Thank you, Brown. We will look into it.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Is, are you, need to hand us something?
This is a, this is a...
Okay, cool.
This isn't that we had started?
Yeah, I forgot to. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
If there's no one else that would like to address the board, um, we do have the need for an executive session regarding real estate this evening. Um, do I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, motion to enter executive session to discuss real estate transactions.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will enter executive session. You go ahead. Sorry.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that's coming out. Um, we really actually, I know some of the issues can be contentious at times, but the last couple of meetings, we've had a lot of public involvement, which is what we've wanted from the beginning. So I would encourage folks to continue to come out, get involved, even if the issue doesn't relate to you, because the laws, ordinances, all these things we're trying to work on impact everybody and we want everybody's opinion. But a lot of times, if you've watched our meetings, we have nobody here. So it's hard to get feedback if you don't come or call us. So please don't take anything that we say here or actions we take that we don't want your feedback. We do desperately want everybody to be involved. So please continue to reach out. Just thank y'all for all coming tonight.
Thank you.